Because we've got a full, full agenda tonight. We'll have to see if we meet our manaclock curfew or not. Hopefully, we won't have to go that long, but I know we've got lots to talk about. So on behalf of, I'll call the meeting to order this evening at 5:30, the 18th of August. You know, and for anyone who's joining us tonight from a public perspective, as always, you'll have three minutes to be able to talk on any time during the meeting. Please email your name to geocalderon@g.calderon@ci.alpine.txt.us. And please, when you send your email to Gio, if you should, include your first name, your last name, along with what ward you reside in or where you might have business interest in town. And just so we've got some insight from the council perspective on who you are. And as a reminder, we're not allowed to comment on whatever is said in public comment. We'll certainly take note and figure out from there, but we cannot give direct comments back. As always, no attacks on anyone on the Zoom call. And thank goodness for passwords. We're able to track now where there might be issues. So I don't expect we'll have any tonight. And looking at our vast number of participants tonight, just looking at the number right now, it looks like we've got 18. So with that as kind of background and calling the meeting to order, let's go ahead and stand and do our pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Secretary, can you give us the formal stuff about, do we have a quorum and proof of notice?
Yes, sir, we do have a quorum with an excuse absence from Mayor Ramos. And the notice was posted at 2:00 PM on August 14th, 2020.
Super. Thanks very much. Gio, do we have any public comments tonight?
No, no comments were received.
Okay, great. Thanks, Gio. And if any pop up during the meeting, don't be bashful, let us know. I know we've got a number of people online beyond city staff and council. So if they've got comments, please give me a heads up. From a presentation, recognitions and proclamation, while we have done on the agenda, there are none. And there is no city mayor's report. We have no city attorney's report. So Eric, why don't we dive into the city manager's report?
Right. Councilor Stevens and the rest of council, thank you. We've got a good report this evening. Dr. Escobar is with us and I did send out the slides ahead of time. He's got that and Gio will flash them up on the screen. All right, so Gio, why don't we go ahead and go to slide three and Dr. Escobar, I'll start from there.
Okay, perfect. So can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So as usual, we will start from the state of Texas and what the COVID data looks like. And then zoom in into our local area. The state of Texas continues to have a decline in the number of new cases reported daily. So it's not a very sharp decline. But considering we are a very large state and there's a lot of different things going on in a lot of different areas within the state, a steady decline is good news. So you can see that from kind of the first half of July, we've made some progress. We are nowhere close to where we were during the month of May and early June. That's where we want to get back to, but we are slowly and steadily getting there. In terms of the deaths that we are seeing, the deaths seem to have plateaued. We are not quite seeing the deaths following the decline in the new cases. But hopefully in the next week or two, we will start seeing that turnaround and actually start going down. But I will take a plateau over a continued increase. So hopefully we continue to turn that bottom graph around. We can move to the next slide. So this is our dashboard of what we are seeing in terms of cases and testing. The US is seeing about 16 cases for every 1,000 individuals. Texas is well beyond that. We're seeing 19 cases for every 1,000 people. Tri-county, 14. And if you extrapolate Brewster County from that tri-county data, we're actually significantly higher. Vast majority of the COVID-19 cases in the Big Bend region have been within Brewster County. So we set at about 21 cases for every 1,000 people. And that actually comes to one out of every 50 individuals having been infected with COVID, which is a lot. In terms of testing, the US is testing at 212 tests for every 1,000 individuals. Texas is well below that. Unfortunately, we're the 14th worst state in terms of testing. We tend to be sitting right around their 13th to 14th lowest in terms of testing, unfortunately. But if you look at the tri-county area, we're at 204 tests for every 1,000 individuals. And this doesn't include the testing that happened today and yesterday in Marfa and Alpine. So that will boost that 204 number up a little bit more. Marfa, there were 311 individuals tested yesterday and today we have 115 in Alpine. Looking at the 201 cases within Brewster County at the red data at the bottom right hand corner, we have three active cases. And actually, as of today, we actually have two active cases that we are monitoring. So we have, a lot of those 201 cases are actually well recovered and no longer contagious. Only two individuals remain under observation. And we continue to have, again, those two deaths that we have had, we've known about for a while. We can go to the next slide. So here's a breakdown of the data in terms of our COVID-19 cases. So at the top left hand corner, you can see the breakdown by age ranges. You continue to have people in their twenties to fifties who are our primary workforce in our communities be the ones who tend to be our COVID positive cases, which is not surprising. They're the ones who have to interact with the most individuals on a day to day basis. We do have zero cases in the zero to nine age range and a few in the older children, teenage age range. I do expect that to increase slightly as schools start up again. And then again, the parents and grandparents and those families may also come up positive. So I do expect our numbers to increase as schools open up. On the top right hand corner, we can see our overall dashboard. You can see that we are well over our outbreak and have really slowed down in the number of cases we have in our community. You can see the large number of recovered cases in orange in the negative space underneath. Because it's hard to see that, the red dashed line, all of those blue bars are kind of increased into that bottom graph below. So in the last 20 days, this is what our active case count has done. And the data that has that has come forward since I sent these slides to Eric, we're now down to, like I said, two active cases currently that we're monitoring. So we continue to make some pretty significant progress.
Hey, Ektar.
Yes.
It might be good also to share with our council, because I don't know if I have, the difference between active cases and recovered cases. What categorizes somebody as being recovered?
Sure. So recovered cases are an automatic move from when an individual tests positive. We have a lot of data on when their COVID virus in their body stops shedding, actively starts, stops shedding where they're no longer contagious to other people. So what we have done is out of the thousands and thousands and thousands of individuals that had COVID, we have actually swabbed them every day. And actually, we've swabbed different parts of their body every day and actually put them on your old school biology Petri dishes and cultured them and seen how much virus grows from all of their parts of their body. So nose and mouth and their bottom and their urine and all kinds of stuff. And we actually see that somewhere between day 10 and day 11, the amount of active alive virus drops drastically, where you can say that on day 11, from when your symptoms start, you are no longer shedding alive virus significantly enough that you can infect other people. So I know that the CDC calls it recovered cases, but recovered actually means you are no longer contagious. It does not mean that you may not have symptoms, just that you can leave your home and no longer pass COVID on to other people. So it's a misnomer and that's unfortunate. We're trying to keep the names consistent with what the CDC does, but they actually mean no longer contagious cases, not that the symptoms have resolved. So on day 11, after your symptoms have started, you automatically move from being an active case down to the recovered case, regardless of whether you have symptoms or not. The only exception to that rule is if individuals are hospitalized or severely immunocompromised, then the CDC asks for a 20 day window of keeping them in the active case count before you move them to the recovered case, just because their immune system is going to be shedding the live virus a little longer and it takes their body a little bit longer to move over to an inactivated virus. So, and we do that automatically. So that is all built into the data I'm giving you. Anyone who is hospitalized with kind of a critical level of illness due to COVID or is immunocompromised, it takes them, they sit on the active case count for 20 days before they move to the recovered cases on day 21.
Great, thank you, Ektar.
We can go to the next slide. So now that we are down to two active cases, we knew that the goal was to lower the number of COVID-19 infections. And we're there, we're down to two active cases currently. And we also know that we won't be able to eliminate COVID completely. We can't put Brewster County in a bubble. We are going to have people that leave the county to travel for work and other things. Schools are starting up again. And so what data oriented goals do we need to have? What's our, what's our goal? What's, what do we shoot for? Not just reducing the number of COVID infections, but at what point have we done a good job? And so the other part of all of this is if we have a low number of infections locally, is it because we aren't testing enough people? If we don't test people, then we're not going to find cases. And so at what point do we know that we are truly doing a good job of containing COVID in our area? So there's a lot of metrics, so a lot of data oriented goals that are out there. They've been put together by the CDC, the NIH, the National Institute of Health, Johns Hopkins and Harvard, their schools of epidemiology have actually come together and together have put together some goals for cities and communities to shoot for. And we can go, we can go to the next slide. So Harvard has put together actually a map of the entire US by counties. I've just taken Texas out and shown you that. But what they've done is they've actually kind of scored the risk level in each county. So based on how many cases they have for 100,000 people. So if you have less than one case for every 100,000 people, which for our population, for Brewster County, which is 9,200, we would want less, you know, significantly less than one case for 9,200 people. So depending on what, how many active cases we're watching, we get scored and this is color coded. So you can see Brewster County and Jeff Davis County are green. Other counties like Presidio County are yellow, so they have slightly more cases per 100,000 people. If you have more than that, you are considered to be in an accelerated spread phase. So you can see there's numerous counties across Texas that are orange. And then there's quite a few counties that are red. And so they still have uncontrolled spread of COVID. And unfortunately, you can see that us green, our green counties actually far, you know, are kind of a huge minority compared to the orange and the red counties. So Texas overall is not in great shape. However, us as a county, we're doing a lot better than where we were before. So we want to, and that's why we want to find these metrics. So how do we measure how well we're doing? And how do we measure how the rest of the state is doing? Because it's not just as easy as having two active cases. Two active cases in Brewster County is very different than having two active cases in Harris County with Houston. So how do we measure what's, what's, you know, successful? So we can go to the next slide. So like I said, all of these different entities have come together and put together some metrics to follow. So metrics are just data oriented goals. So one of them is ICU hospital bed occupancy. So this can change very quickly day to day, as you know. You know, people get admitted to a hospital 24/7. And so Big Bend Regional would know this metric and would, and I've talked to Rick, they'd be willing to let us know if we hit, you know, exceeding this metric. So the goal right now is to have a less than 60% occupancy in our ICU. So if our ICU has at least 40% of our beds available, in case we have a surge of COVID cases, critical COVID cases, then, you know, that helps measure how much hospital utilization there is. And so we, our ICU is actually not occupied. We have 0% occupancy in our ICU, which is great. So we meet the goal of less than 60% occupancy. And like I said, Rick Flores, the CEO of Big Bend Regional, said that he will let me know if or when we hit over 60% occupancy. So right now, we're kind of a green light in that metric. New COVID-19 infections. Now, new COVID-19 infections can be measured in a daily basis, a weekly basis, or a 14 day basis. Because we are a sparsely populated area, it is really hard to measure this in a daily or weekly timeframe because of how much our testing fluctuates. For example, we have mobile testing coming through our area this week. So our weekly new COVID-19 infections this week will be a lot higher because we have the opportunity to catch those individuals because of our mobile testing. So we're actually going to do a 14 day window and then, and look at it kind of in a larger spectrum, just to make the data more consistent. So the 14 day goal for new COVID-19 infections is we should have less than 50 new cases for 100,000 people. So if you go down to the 9,200 people that live in Brewster County, that puts us at less than four cases over the past 14 days for our Brewster County population. So you can, so that's actually already given to us. The active cases that we're currently monitoring is that exact metric. So that makes it really easy to follow. So as soon as the number of active cases falls below four, we meet that, we meet that condition. And again, we are doing really well there. So our first two metrics, we are currently meeting. The third metric is our Texas infection reproduction rate. Now, this is a little bit complicated. The goal is to be less than 1.0. So we want to be 0.9, 0.5, et cetera. And what this means is that for every 100 people that are infected, if 100 people infect 100 other people, that is a one to one ratio. Each person infected one other person. If every 100 people infected two people each, then 100 people end up infecting 200 people. And then each of those 200 people end up infecting two of their own. And so you can see that now one person now infected two people each. So that reproduction rate is 2.0. And that is exponential growth of the infection. So what we want is a reproduction rate to be less than one. So for every 100 people that are infected, they infect only 95. You know, five of those people, for example, the infection stopped with them. They wore a mask, they self-isolated quickly, they recognized their symptoms and the infection stopped with them. They did not pass that infection along to other people. So now 100 people only ended up infecting 95 other people. So that is a 0.95 infection rate. And then if those 95 people, again, at least some of them take precaution, then those 95 people only infect 85 people, let's say. Does that make sense? And you get smaller and smaller and smaller. So we want a less than 1.0 infection rate. I'm sorry, reproduction rate. We don't have enough population to calculate our own infection rate for Brewster County. So we do have to look at where Texas is as a whole. And that is really helpful because we also know that a lot of our residents here do leave the county for work and a lot of other things. So we should be looking at this statewide. But our goal is to be less than 1.0. And I apologize if that's confusing, but that's a, that's a tough statistical thing that we have to follow. The fourth criteria is testing positivity rates. So whenever we do bulk testing, like the 115 people we got tested today at the Alpine mobile testing, we want less than 5% of the results to come back positive. That means we're doing a lot of testing, but we're catching a lot of negatives and we actually don't have a lot of positives. So that 5% positivity rate or less is what we're aiming for when we get results back. Last, the last bulk testing result I have unfortunately is from a month ago, when we had the July 18th, 19th and 20th testing that came through Marfa and Alpine. And that one, we had an 8.9% positivity rate. So 8.9% of the people that were tested over those days came back positive. So we did not meet the 5% positivity rate then. But again, that was also a month ago and we've made significant progress since then. So I don't have that, that data from the August 3rd and 4th mobile testing and definitely don't have that data from today and yesterday's mobile testing. So we don't meet that, that metric just yet based on the data I have. But I've been bugging DSHS every day about it. So hopefully they'll get that data to me soon. And then the final one is average weekly testing. And I apologize, I missed, I forgot a word here. The goal is 150 tests every day for 100,000 population. So for our tri-county area, because this is hard to divide into counties, but for the tri-county area, that means we want to run close to 200 tests every week. So the only way these other four metrics work is if we are doing robust testing. And the fact that Marfa tested 311 individuals yesterday is phenomenal. They actually met that goal for all of us. And then unfortunately, we only had 115 people show up today, which is, which is not going to help, you know, down the road if the number of people showing up for tests declines over time. We still need people to show up and get tested to really prove that on an ongoing basis, we really do not have COVID in a large, in a large portion of our population anymore.
You know, Ektar, I was thinking about it after we had discussed it this morning and I'm wondering if we need to really do some reframing with, with our messaging. Because a month ago, we were kind of telling people, don't go test unless you have some type of symptom. And now it seems like we're really saying, let's try to do more of a mass test. And I don't want to steal your thunder because I know you've got a couple other ideas to talk about who are the right people to test.
Yeah, and I, I'm working on a, on a kind of a handout, an informational handout about mobile testing because you're right, the parameters have changed. And so Stephanie and I are putting together, and maybe we can have Chris Ruggia help just because he's so good at that visual side of all of these informational things. But I do think that putting together just a one page paper on, you know, format of, you know, now, not pertaining to a specific date of mobile testing, but just in general, you know, what are we using mobile testing for? And there are specific industries that are at higher risk of, you know, being exposed to COVID. And so the more people you deal with day in and day out in close proximity, so healthcare workers for sure, you know, first responders, but also folks that work at grocery stores, folks that work in restaurants. So there are certain industries that are definitely at higher risk. And so I agree, I think there needs to be a little bit of a move to re-educate our community just to make sure, I'm glad they were following the old rules, but we also have now shifted. And so we need to kind of re-educate our community so that they can do their part in monitoring our, our community by doing, you know, continued testing. So yeah, and I'm working on that tonight and I will email that to Stephanie and you, and you guys and Chris and we can put something together to help, to help do that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. And then the final slide, I think, Gio, I have one more. Oh, two more to go up to slide nine, I think. Yeah. So this is just where our metrics are in general. I just wanted to break it down so it's easy to see. So you can see our five metrics and then where we are. So we meet the first and second one. And then the last one, we meet our average weekly tri-county testing from last week is actually 272. And, you know, we'll meet that this week for sure because of the mobile testing that came through. So the two in the middle, the third and fourth one, we don't quite meet yet. The Texas reproduction goal level is 1.1. And actually, they updated that today. Texas is at a 1.02. So just a little bit above the goal. So hopefully in the next week or so, we'll meet that, not just on a Brewster County level, but across the state. And I'll continue to bother DSHS about the positivity rate from our mass testing that we, we get to have coming through our area. Oops, sorry. And so, so we'll, we'll keep an eye on those metrics, but those are our goals. And we do meet some of them, but not, not all of them. And so we do need to continue doing the things we are to make sure that we meet more and more of these metrics. And especially with schools reopening, you know, I think we're in as good of a position as possible to have Sol Ross and the schools reopen. And, you know, we were in much better shape today than we were a month ago. So we'll have to see what happens with, with all of that, starting this week and next week.
So after this is Rick thinking about, you know, as the reopening and really good presentation and helpful to understand on the whole shedding process and how long that takes through the cycle. Lots of dialogue going on. I know that, you know, all the elected officials in Presidio County and Brewster County got a letter from 75 individuals that says, hey, it's time to stop wearing masks. You know, a number of have this view that masks have been one of the reasons we've got our numbers down. What's your take on this? And what's kind of from a broader county perspective, the thinking on that topic as to when it no longer makes sense to wear masks, if at all?
Um, I think that when we hit a, when we hit a period of time where we're not going to have any major changes and we meet these metrics. So right now, with schools and Sol Ross reopening, I think we're not kind of at a status quo level yet because something, we're setting ourselves up for a scenario where we may see a spike in COVID cases again in a few weeks as individuals start interacting with each other. And, you know, we have all of our children in our local schools are all local children from these families. But Sol Ross, we're bringing students from all over the state and the country into our community. And we welcome them, but it does kind of open our bubble of Brewster County up a little bit. And so I don't think we're at that point yet. You know, once we settle in and we see what happens with their COVID numbers, we'll be in a really different place to tell. But what I'm afraid of is that we would roll back the mask mandate and then in two weeks, we have a lot more infections, not because of the mask mandate, but because we have schools restarting and Sol Ross restarting. And then we have to reinstitute it because we no longer qualify to opt out. So going back and forth is going to be a lot harder than just sticking it out until we can solidly confirm that we can cruise for a while, not forever, but for a while without masks. So I don't think we're there yet. But I also, I don't think it's unreasonable to think that we won't be there at some point. We're just not there yet.
Yeah, so if you're to take a guess, I don't think anyone's going to hold you accountable. Is that two weeks seems like not quite enough? You know, two months seems, if the numbers are down, maybe too long. So somewhere in between?
Yeah, so usually if restarting Sol Ross and the schools, kind of seeing the aftermath of that, if you, if you want to call it that. I think a month from now will be a really good place to have identified any sources of outbreak, if any schools had to close because we suddenly saw a lot of infections there, et cetera. So I think a month from now would be a really good time to look at what our data shows. And it will be a lot better of a place to make that decision. And of course, that decision comes from the county level. And, and my job is, is, and I know the council knows this, but my job is only to give recommendations based on the data. And it's up to decision makers to make the decision. So I will follow these metrics and we'll keep an eye on Sol Ross and the schools. We're doing so already and we'll see where we are. But I think a month is a, is a good timeframe to really see the outcome of reopening all of our educational facilities.
Well, it's interesting to see what's going on around the US with the universities opening up, you know, and some of the challenges that they're running into, the positivity rate. And what's nice about, you know, the five metrics you have, it goes back to your point earlier about stability. Maintain stability, we're not going to stop it forever, but keeping the numbers low and slowing down this transmission rate is a really important measure.
Yes, and I, and I, and we also need to remember, and I think I said this at the last meeting too, that getting children to school is going to help impact positively a lot of families in our area. And we cannot disregard the economic impact that schools can provide. And I, yeah, I think we have to just wait a little bit to give these families a chance to be able to go back to work. You know, we've had one parent out of some of our families stay home because we have children at home for an extended period of time. And we, we have to help these families. And this is in the end going to help economically. It's just not direct, it's not a direct impact, but it does help, especially our younger families who do have young children. And so we have to do our part. And in the end, it will help our financial bottom line, even if it's independently.
Yeah, no, I know in my own family, because you know, we have six kids. Yeah, no, I, I know in my own family, because, you know, we have six kids and a dozen grandkids, you know, getting them back to school, because some have already started, has been very, very helpful from the parental standpoint. And, you know, they're following the mask requirements to make, to reduce the spread.
Yep.
Dr. Escobar, I'm just curious. I heard to the grapevine, and whether this is true or not, but can a person be tested more than once? If the individual goes to a test site one week and for some reason isn't confident of the results, so he, he can go to another test site another, in a couple of weeks? Is that possible?
Yes, absolutely, that's possible. And we actually have, you know, we have certain individuals in our community that every time there's a mobile testing that comes through, they get tested every time. I will tell you that I am one of those individuals. As a healthcare provider, I come in contact with sick people all the time, and I help take care of COVID positive people all the time. And I don't qualify to get tested through my workplace because I'm not symptomatic. But the mobile testing site is a great place where if you know that you're an employee of a high-risk industry, restaurant, service, retail, you know, grocery store, gas station, healthcare, first responders, teachers, you know, educational facilities, especially now with everybody opening up, I actually advocate for the higher-risk industries to take advantage of mobile testing every time they come through. You know, the fact that Marfa was able to test 311 people and we only tested 115 is actually pretty abysmal, considering we have triple the population. We really need to get our, our folks that are going to be in higher-risk industries testing more robustly, whether they have symptoms or not. Because you might, if we have a resurgence of COVID in our community, we're going to find it in those industries first. And so this is the time for folks that work in those to take advantage of our mobile testing and get tested repeatedly, absolutely. And I, I think that, that's, now that we have the number of cases really low, we don't have to save those tests for people who are symptomatic, because we just don't have a lot of symptomatic people around us right now. But what we now want to shift to is ongoing monitoring of COVID in our community. And one of the best ways to, you know, do that is all of those folks in high-risk industries to continue to get tested. So if we start seeing a bunch of positives in our educational facilities, that's going to tell us what's happening with COVID in our community. They're going to be kind of our, our lighthouse, you know, in this, in this storm. And so that's, we want to kind of shift the way we're using mobile testing and think of this more on a long-term basis. And that's going to help us contact trace faster, you know, and get results faster, and really shut down the spread of COVID in our communities quickly by testing these higher-risk industries.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Escobar? Hey, Ect, as always, thanks very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Ect. Gio, you can move forward to slide nine or 10, I'm sorry. So one of the other things that we're looking at from a city perspective is, you know, we, we started taking temperatures of our employees. They were coming into work every day. And it's interesting, just here at City Hall, listening to people say, yeah, I always come in at X temperature, 97.7 every day, or 98.3 every day. And it got kind of us thinking a little bit about, well, what if somebody's temperature is changing? And how do you, you know, track that and monitor that? And so I had downloaded this Kensa app the other day and just started entering in numbers. And interesting thing with Kensa is they are tied in more with some national mapping that's really looking at, at elevated rise in temperature, being an indicator of, you know, something more going on in your body. So something, Gio's actually on vacation this week, although he is working today. But something that Gio and Chris and I will look to see if we can pull together some crowdsourcing information from a city perspective, and then, of course, make it available to others throughout the community. Because it's just, it's a good early indicator. And I think when we really process what Ect was talking about, getting, making sure people are going and testing for COVID, well, if all of a sudden, you know, your temperature's been 98.3, 98.3, 98.3, and then you take it and it's 99.5, wow, well, we've got a mobile testing coming up this week. The next day, 99.5, maybe I should go in and get tested. There could be something more going on. And so really, just more than anything, trying to provide some tools to people so that it gives them some, some better indicators about their own health and wellbeing and might stimulate either a test or greater level care. So that's slide 10, slide 11. I did get this from a physician, actually my sister-in-law. And I, I thought it was, it was a good thing to share. You know, we always have these things that come out with different words to, to different songs. But then, the night before distance learning, and 'twas the night before distance learning, all through the town, everyone was thinking, how will this go down? Students and parents and teachers all wonder, can I make this work? What if I blunder? Passwords, logins, do I have it already? Easy now, take a breath, remember to steady. There will be blips, there will be unknowns, but we're in this together, you're not alone. One day at a time, this is not a race, a new journey for all, so please give grace. Grace to yourself and grace to each other. We will learn through this one way or another. Students want to learn and teachers want to teach. Families need to work, so it may be a reach. But patience and respect will guide us through this strange experience that is so new. I'll say it again many more times, we'll work this out, things will be just fine. Here we go, folks, this could be a while, just remember to be kind, and of course, to smile. So I wanted to read that this evening, because it's, it's just a general reminder to us that as a community and as a nation, and certainly as a world, we're, we're charting into new territory and being patient and kind to each other and working through. And I think Ect made a great point earlier. You know, having the kids back to school, there's a lot of families that need this to happen for their own financial health, which translates to mental health as well. So that, that we do to encourage and support and make the right decisions, you know, from marrying, wearing a mask, to social distancing, to keeping crowds under a pre-described amount are certainly things that we can do. So thank you for all our community's work. It was nice to see us green on that map. And I certainly believe that between Alpine and Brewster County, we have the moxie of people to continue to charge forward and be successful. So next slide for me, Gio. You know, Chris talked a little bit more in depth on the safety pledge, pledges last meeting, but I did want to give you an update. He had the kickoff call with our hotels and our short-term rental. And it went very, very well. They, you know, it was just very well received. And I think overall, you know, from a community perspective, just trying to provide tools out there to give visible representation through these pledges of, of things that restaurants and hotels can be doing to provide safety. And over time, we know that people, you know, citizens, whether they're local, they, they, they want to be able to see these types of representations. So whether they go out to eat, or now, you know, folks that are, that are coming through town, that they realize that we certainly have taken this very seriously. So good, good feedback from the group there. Next slide for me.
Eric, before you go on the next, relative to the safety pledge, any idea of the number of restaurants or hotel leaders that are using those?
Yeah, so the, the restaurants have been, they've appreciated, but they all seem to be awfully busy. I, Heather is working that piece, she's the one making the phone calls. I don't know the exact number, I've seen a couple of them up. I will say, you know, Monica Carruga at Old Gringo, you know, she was the first one to sign off on it up. And saw, saw it in her, her window. And we're going to continue to just make a push and make the phone calls and talk to the folks. There are a couple of restaurants who have taken tables from us, from the old shoot. If anybody's been in front of the Century, they see four or five tables out there as well. So I think, you know, this is that core group between Century, Old Gringo, Taste and C. They've been, been very engaged with us. On the, the parks and rec, I really wanted to kind of close out the, the summer season. It, you know, we, we tried to put programming together and really appreciate what Calvin and team did as far as finding alternatives to the pool being open. And then, of course, as we all know, unfortunately, we get to the first part of June. Case count went up, and we really reacted by shutting down the activities, and we never did quite get back to them. With that being said, I feel very encouraged that we were able to pivot, create something and make it available for the community. And, you know, we're, as always, we're not going to sit around and bemoan about things. We're going to try to look for solutions to help provide these, these sorts of healthy alternatives within the community. I am very encouraged. I, I pretty much go walking every night through the community and see just a lot of people out walking, using our parks, and, and being active outside. And I think, you know, one of the other pieces, when we look at something like the COVID disease, you know, how do you build up your immune system so that you're in a better position to fight any sort of virus or illness that attacks your body? And certainly outdoor activities and having, you know, good parks and good recreation areas are important for the health of our community. So hats off to Robert Yanis and his team for continuing to work very hard to make our parks look as beautiful as possible. So next slide, please. You know, shifting gears a little bit. We really got kicked off earlier this year with some great leadership training. I actually started the end of last year, and then we moved into this year, and we were humming along, and then COVID hit us. And we, we did kind of a checking in in April. How are we doing? What are we learning? Where are we at with, with kind of our goal setting? And then it's like, we, we turned around and, gosh, now we're in August. And what we've done is made it a priority to restart with our team and focus on those goals, the priorities, objectives, especially as we go through the, the process of approving the budget, making sure we have alignment there so that each of our departments and their, their initiatives are driving value for our community and staying within the budget. So we're going to kick that back off next week. And then September 16th, we'll roll into taking those priorities and initiatives and challenges, and then how do we engage with our employees? So that our employees are lockstep with that as well. So I think, and then you'll see some of the, the final lessons up here on the slide. But it's, it's super important. And I think, you know, right now, is, is our, our department heads and supervisors are looking through their priorities. You know, we certainly hired a lot of new department heads at the end of last year, and many of them had 180-day plans. We'll hear from Chief Martin today, and he'll talk a little bit about hers. But we, we've certainly been very pleased with the progress we're making towards those initiatives and priorities. So hats off to the team with that. And then one last slide that I have before I hand over to Eddie is Senator John Cornyn. Some of you may or may not have seen this, but the City of Alpine received $6,000 in the second round of the coronavirus recovery grants for public housing authorities. Would love to add another zero on that, but we'll never shy away from $6,312. And, you know, our housing authority in Alpine is very important. We've talked extensively from, you know, housing in general in Alpine, affordable housing, and having a place for people that is affordable and allows them to make ends meet. And I think our three facilities in, in Alpine are super special and super important. I happen to live right next to one of them. And, you know, it's just a very important asset, series of assets that the community has. So glad to see they're getting some additional funding. So any questions for me before I hand over to Mr. Molinar? All right. Let's see. Oh, good, there's Eddie. We've got him off mute, you're up.
Hey, everybody. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, we got you, Eddie.
Well, yeah, just a quick update on what been, we've been, all the streets we've been paving. Do you want to go to the next slide, Gio? The, here, as you can see, are mostly on the south side, which is Ward 4. We've been doing most of our seal coding on Ward 4 and Ward 5. We're fixing to head over to Ward 3. This is Sixth Street, again, Seventh Street and Main Street. Their white streets are kind of like pretty good streets. Our next. And again, this is a six going, going east on Avenue F. So we actually did like eight blocks on Avenue F, and that's just gives you an idea of all the blocks on that. Next slide. But this here, we're going to show you a little video here. This is the alley between the Gallego and Avenue F. This, this alley had been paved several years ago. It's actually the, the exit to the Catholic Church. This particular spreader we have here is, is connected to a, to a dump truck. We actually purchased that spreader when our old spreader box went out. We didn't have our new spreader box back then, so we had to do our streets with that. We only shoot an eight-foot wide path, so, you know, it would, it would, it was a lot of time-consuming with that. But, you know, we got it done. So I just figured I'd give you guys a video to let you know how that works.
Gio, you can click on that video on that left.
So as you can see here, we already put down our CRS2, and we're just covering, it's actually a manual spreader, so I'm pulling that handle. So you either, with that handle, you just put down the aggregate you, you want to put down. It's, so we haven't used that spreader in quite a while. So now that we kind of rigged it up again, we're, we're planning on doing some alleys that have already been paved. Unfortunately, we can't do it like Lance, you know, do the whole alley, but we can do an eight-foot pass, even a 10-foot pass. And I think that would be ideal. There's actually some alleys in town that are paved, or, or maybe even alleys that have been used quite a lot. We can go ahead and start paving them as well. Next slide, please. This is on the north side, as you can see, it's North 14th, North 15th and 13th. So as I mentioned the last time, so now, from actually North 15th, which is the dollar store, all the way to Fort Davi State Bank, everything's been seal-coated. So with that, we have all the streets between the wrong ways seal-coated, except for the ones Lance is fixing to do, which is Garnet, Phelps and Walker. Next slide. So these are, these are the, the blocks that I was referring to, which is Soft Bird, I mean, North Bird, Holland and Avenue E. And then those two little sections, it's on 7th and 11th, going towards the railroad tracks. This last slide to your right is actually Avenue A, going towards the east on that little creek right there off Fifth Street. Next.
Yeah, and hey, Eddie, one of the things I think to note, like you were telling me the other day about how you've been adjusting the amount of, of aggregate that you put down, and how that really not only eliminates some of the waste, but also... of aggregate that you put down and uh how that really uh not only eliminates some of the waste, but also um you know, you don't, you're not gonna have to sweep up as much either.
Yeah, that was another thing I was gonna fix and test base on is like, I was telling Eric, we used to do uh twenty one pounds of rock per square foot. And uh we cut it down to actually eighteen, which is is helping us a lot because, yeah. Uh twenty one uh pounds of rock per square foot was just giving us a lot of excess aggregate. And once, you know, you roll it and you turn it loose to the traffic, once you come back and 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 sweep it. You lose a lot of aggregate, but now as I'll show you in a minute, the next slide that uh we're saving a lot of aggregate. It it the streets actually look like they're kind of already been swept, but it's just a it's working out pretty good. This next video, we're gonna show you for some of you that haven't seen how we chip spread our streets. Well, that first video, if you want to click on it, Gio, is is where how we're putting down our CRS two.
What would you need for this?
East Brown off of Fifth Street going towards Fighting Buck Avenue. The video, unfortunately, it's not that clear and it's moving, but they'll give you an idea of how we seal coat. Uh usually, it's recommended that you put down your aggregate right on top of that. What we like to do is is we got uh in touch with Aragon and I asked him a few questions. We like to shoot our our CRS two and let it set for at least five minutes. Let that asphalt start getting sticky, then we will put it on our aggregate and we get a better seal that way. Uh if you want to start that next video, please. Here we're just coming down, getting ready to shoot over that CRS two. Again, we are putting down seventeen pounds of rock per square foot and it's working pretty good. The reason you want to do that is because you just want to put enough aggregate so that eventually your asphalt will come up and and swallow that rock and then you have a a good, nice uh surface. So when you first get on a a a street that's been uh seal coated, you notice all that rock. Eventually, all that cars. Again, this is uh on Brown Street going towards Fifth Street. Uh most of the guys are doing pretty good. Three other guys on the dump trucks, there there's they're new at this and they're they're working out pretty nice, which is good to know. Nice. Again, this is, this is Brown Street looking from Fifth uh east. And then on this side is from looking from Fighting Buck West. As you can see right there on the right slide where the traffic is actually already pushing that aggregate down to the to the surface. And the asphalt is actually already coming up and it's already starting to look like a smooth road. Next. Okay, this is our next thirteen and a half blocks we're fixing to get started on. Like I mentioned before, we're uh we're fixing to start on Ward three. I know that, you know, a lot of uh thinking, well, my ward, you you've been over there, but we still need some streets that that have one. But what I'm trying to do, our goal is to try to at least get twenty, twenty-five blocks per ward. That way, your constituents, if they, you know, call you up or say, hey, when are they gonna come to my side of town? You can tell them that, you know, we're trying to do that. Uh and then we'll start back to Ward four and and do the whole circle again. Uh with this thirteen and a half blocks that we're fixing to do, we're we're gonna be right at sixty-five blocks. So uh and this time around, I we were gonna do eighteen blocks, but we we finished out doing twenty-four blocks. So uh hopefully, you know, if everything goes well, you know, weather, uh equipment breaking down, everything. Those thirteen and a half blocks might wind up being eighteen or even twenty blocks. So I think we're at a good pace right now, so to accomplish, you know, a goal of a hundred blocks. That's pretty much it for now.
Any any questions for Eddie?
I I don't have any questions. Just comments. Great work. It's nice to see all the all around around.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Somebody was the background.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, echo, echo, echo.
There it's gone. I think it's police chief. You're in trouble, chief.
I don't think it's me. I hope it's not. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
We're quiet.
Reporting on my uh hundred and eighty day plan, it's actually at about two hundred and seventy days now, uh but I'll get started on it. Uh one of the first things uh looked at when we came into the department was our policy, uh departmental policy. And uh I have uh started on that uh working on some new policies and rewriting the policy handbook for the police department. And uh it's it's gonna be a pretty lengthy process, but I I have started on that. The uh department has two evidence officers uh on staff that we are going to get recertified. Uh we have moved our evidence room to the vault here at the old, what do you call this, the old courthouse, the old city hall. And uh it's a, it's a lot bigger than what we had. Uh it's it's a lot more secure and I believe it would even uh register as being fireproof. A lot better than what we had. It's a lot more secure, a lot, the evidence is is in a lot better place now. Uh that was a a big concern where it was when I came in and we didn't have room for much more. So it's probably tripled in size, so that's been a a really good thing. Uh one of the things I looked at was our computer software. Um we currently utilize a system called CopSync and I went out and obtained some bids for some new software, also included CopSync. And uh I have those on hand and and I've been working with Marcy to try to find some funding that we could utilize to uh possibly get that implemented. And the software that I've I've looked at is gonna enhance our report writing, our data and also our dispatch with our our CAD system and our record keeping. And it will keep a a a log of all that, which our software now uh doesn't do. It'll also help the officers with their report writing and uh stuff like that. Um next slide, please. Uh we've, I've written some policy and got some process in place on hiring new employees, which uh we've done here in the last few months, pretty much uh uh worked real good. I am going to uh implement the physical agility testing in that policy. I did not do the physical agility testing yet, but once that's in policy, that will be done. And I am happy to report that currently, as we speak, we just put uh Alejandra Martinez on. She started June the tenth and that fills all of our police officers' positions. So my police officers and my dispatchers, uh I'm full. I do have an administrative assistance position that I will be backfilling uh once the new budget comes in. But we are full on police officers. Good shape there. We're real excited to have a some young officers on. And uh they came out of El Paso Academy and uh excited about them getting started in their careers. Um next slide, there we go. Uh the chat.
How's everyone?
Agility test. I'm I'm sorry.
I said, how's everyone looking forward to the agility test?
You know, I I think a lot of them are already working out. You know, we've got the roller back there. We've got some weights back there and uh you know, it's it's surprisingly to see they'll go through it in on the on their own. They've already start started working out. I've kind of encouraged that to let them know that I am gonna set a date for the testing just to see where their baseline is to get started. So they've kind of taken it to heart. So uh on the cheat with the cheat chat with the chief, I've implemented that. I've had one live one-on-one. I did it at the library prior to COVID. COVID kind of kind of put a hamper on things and but just so you know, I do have a chat with the chief that I'm gonna be in a doing over Zoom on August the twenty-seventh. So it's from nine to eleven AM in the morning. Like I said, the the COVID has really put a hamper on our our bringing people in to train and uh in stuff like that. Uh the only thing that I'm behind on is getting my officers certified on CPR, AED and first aid training. That's kind of a hands-on type type training that we have to either bring someone in or go somewhere. And I'm having a hard time finding someone to teach that for me, but I am still working on it. Uh do I have found some options, so I will get that done. Uh the uh one of the things I was gonna touch on there in in my one one eighty day plan is looking at at firearms instructors and I'm I'm in good shape. I came in and there's already currently firearms instructor uh firearms instructors. So there's a lot of things that I didn't know the police department had that I'm in good shape on. The the training that we're doing, we're doing a lot of online training now. There's OSS and TML. It's uh some of it you have to pay for, some of it's free. And I've encouraged all the officers to uh see what they need and and we look at their their TCO file and get the the ones they need to meet their certifications. And with that being said, in the department now, just for your information, we have four master police officers, TCO certified master. We have one advanced, two intermediate and the three basic police officers. So uh that's that's really good. That's that that's really good for a department this size. Um I've looked at the bicycle uh in implementing the bicycles for the special functions, which we haven't had a lot of for COVID. Neither is it. It's kind of hard to get the training to get the officer certified right now. Uh the only training that I've found is at El Paso, so uh we'll be looking into that. Hopefully, COVID will lighten up a little bit and we can can get that started. And uh the FEMA classes, uh but that's something that all the officers that have had, when I was here, that started. I think they've all completed those FEMA classes and now I'm gonna be in the process of getting our new hires through those courses. Uh next slide, please. Um one of the things that uh is encouraging the officers to to get their training and and educate themselves is the pay structure that uh hopefully will be implemented after tonight's meeting of the uh recognition of the level of certification. That really helps and drives the officers to educate themselves uh on their own. A lot of them are doing this on their own and also uh it's just for our department. The more educated, better uh officers we have is better for the community. In my uh research for the computer software, I also added in there for uh the ticket riders. Um that's that's actually budgeted in my budget and but I've also found a new grant that's out there. It's called the CARES Act and it actually will purchase departments due to COVID laptop computers. And I'm trying to find out if that will actually cover our ticket riders. It it in a sense, when you go up to the vehicle, you you don't have to touch the driver's license. You don't have to touch anything. The ticket riders would keep you from having to touch anything, so I'm hoping that's gonna fall under the COVID. The the CARES Act did show some ticket riders, just not the ones that I was looking at. So you know, I may may make an adjustment there that will hopefully the city will benefit from. I have taken bids on the LPRs. That's the license plate reader cameras and regular cameras to install around the city. Uh I know when I first introduced this, I've talked about putting LPR cameras on the vehicles. And now that I've gotten into, there's some new research out there to what they're recommending is permanent mounted LPRs around the city. That way, instead of the cameras only being utilized as the cars are are working, driving around the city. These cameras would be working twenty-four seven reading license plates. Uh and uh one of the benefits from that would be uh when you put a BOLO of uh uh a license plate of interest, it would flag that that license plate notifies, now we go find that vehicle. But that those cameras would be live twenty-four seven instead of only when that officer is in that vehicle driving around. So that that could possibly create uh revenue for the city depending on what the BOLOs are for. Okay, uh next slide, please. As far as our our administrative top side of education, uh I'm looking at, I do have one officer signed up to attend the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. He uh is also registered for the LEAMIC. Now, it does, it takes a while. You have to do some testing and stuff before you're accepted into the LEAMIC. And um hopefully, that'll be fast tracked and we'll get him through LEAMIC before he even goes to the FBI. They keep pushing the FBI back on us due to COVID, uh but we're working on that. And also, of course, y'all are aware of Philip Fierro taking the fire inspector classes. He is in part two of the of the uh fire inspector class. Uh he's almost at the point where he has to go off and do some hands-on training, but that's that's not too far off. And then myself, uh I am required to go to a chief school once a year and I have that scheduled for November. And that's at LEAMIC at Sam Houston. That's that's the only place it's offered. And uh I was notified today that it used to be free, but due to the COVID, now it's gonna be a hundred dollars. So okay, whatever I gotta do. So uh next slide, please. Uh the needs right now that I've identified that here recently that I need to address is our Incar Dash Cam cameras. Uh we're having a lot of problems with them. Uh they're either not working or they work if it's cool weather. Uh they're hit and miss. Or they may record and we're having a hard time downloading them. Uh we did get some uh computers from the COG that we're gonna be able to download that footage on. Uh we keep having to buy storage for our computer. This is gonna eliminate all that problem. And I haven't, that hasn't been awarded to us yet, but soon as it is, I will let council know about it. But it's gonna be a big savings to the city for for this kind of data storage. The grant that we put in for the handheld radios and communications, I believe I've heard that it did not go through. So that's gonna make me look at uh adding an additional six handheld radios. And I did six this year. I think if I do six next year, I'll be in good shape. So I'll I will be working on that. And also our intermediate defense, you know, it's 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 a good thing to have intermediate defense when we need it. Uh uh we received the donation earlier this year and I did purchase one new taser and got a really good price on it. Had a little money left over, so I bought an additional uh three batteries, which got one taser, one officer with a taser. It gives us two spare tasers as backups. But they are the older style and uh they really could stand to be upgraded like the new taser that I bought. So uh right now, we're in good shape, but I will be looking at that eventually. Uh the grants for the uh body cameras and the body armor, uh I believe is in good shape. We're just waiting. I believe it's September when we find out for sure about that. And we can get new body armor on all of our officers uh and with new body cams. Uh next slide, please. Um I have implemented some changes in the process that we are doing things in our our report writing and our evidence handling. Uh saw some areas that could be questioned in court, so I put uh some policy in place on on that. And I believe that's gonna uh benefit us in the long run. Uh the the video magistrate, this is a new one. Uh the sheriff has uh now made it a requirement that for all agencies across the county uh have their their prisoners magistrated prior before the jail will accept them. So we've implemented the vid video magistrate software. Is what it is, is where a magistrate can do a magistrate on a prisoner uh over the computer. And that person's magistrated, then we can release them to the jail. That has been put on us by the sheriff, uh, once the, we acquired the video magistrate and talking to our, our city judge. Um, I was advised that she would only be able to magistrate up until 10:00 p.m. and not before 7:00 a.m. So that is a stumbling block that we need to figure out what direction we wanna take. We're not a holding facility here at our department. Uh, there has been some issues withholding the prisoners and, uh, or them attempting to escape or releasing the prisoners back into the community and having to obtain a search warrant to put them in jail the next day or day after, as soon as we can get that warrant in hand. But that, that is an issue we need to and figure out how we're gonna handle that.
Chief, I'll get, chief, this is Rod. Now I'll get with you on a, on a potential solution to the night, magistration issue. I also might add to the council that getting those, those in-car videos sure helps the city both from liability issues and also from making it easier to prosecute. Recording everything takes away the thing of the citizens trying to complain about something.
Okay.
Help me understand the magistration process. So it sounds like the sheriff has said they, when I read this, has to be magistrated prior to going into jail. What does, does magistration mean and why does a judge have to be involved?
Look, council, the, uh, somebody can be arrested by a police officer, but they haven't been seen a magistrate yet. Seeing a magistrate is part of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure. So after somebody's arrested by, uh, one of, uh, our police officers, uh, and they can be, and frequently in other places, they're taken to jail and they're held until the magistrate can seal them. That was what used to happen in Brewster County. You know, you'd wait till the next morning and the magistrate would go over there. There'd be three or four people and what the, what a magistration does is to tell everybody, tell the person what they're charged with. Make sure that they understand what they're charged with. Make sure that, uh, they understand the right to have a lawyer. If they, uh, if they want a lawyer appointed, uh, they can appoint one then or they can wait for the, another proceeding. And, uh, there's a checklist of things that the magistrate judge is supposed to do to, uh, make sure that people understand their rights after they've been arrested. After they've been arrested and magistrated, after that checklist is done by the magistrate judge, then they can go into the jail and it's, at that time, they should have a bond set by the magistrate judge. So they go into jail and they could try to start posting a bond. So it's a second step after, the first step is arresting somebody. The second step is magistration. And the sheriff is now requiring that magistration occur before somebody's accepted. Texas law, uh, this requires that a county sheriff is mandatory, has to accept a person into his jail after magistration. And he has discretion to reject somebody before magistration.
Lovely. Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Um, why is the judge refusing to magistrate between those hours? I don't imagine there's very many people being arrested.
We, we average anywhere from two to could be more, uh, if we had access to magistration at night. Two to five a week, thereabouts. As far as why the judge won't magistrate after 10:00 p.m., uh, I was advised that she was older and she didn't feel that she was capable of doing that. Uh, that would be a question for Judge Stewart.
Thank you.
I, I will say that, uh, Judge, uh, Steele, Bob Steele, JP precinct one, has also told me the same thing. I have reached out to him and he, he gives me, uh, up until eight p.m.
So you can hold them in a holding tank, but you, but you just can't put them in jail?
Well, if I had a holding tank, I could hold them until I get them magistrated, yes, but I don't have a holding cell.
Well, I understand that. I'm just, just.
I, I do think that tomorrow's workshop, uh, will be worthwhile, uh, on that breakout group for law enforcement to ask what the other agencies are doing, uh, from a magistration perspective. Or are they be, are they being even held to the same standard we are?
Yep.
I agree.
And that is one of the questions that I have queued up to ask the group.
Great.
How it, or, if they're having the same issues that we're having. Okay. Um, I believe that was my last slide. Is there any other questions?
Yes, chief, but I do have a question. Regarding the, the LPRs, the license plate readers, the, the purpose overall, if I understand correctly, is basically to, I guess, sort of curb or monitor speeding within the city. Maybe monitoring those that are running stoplights. We don't have too many, uh, traffic lights here, but, potentially identifying those that are on the run from somewhere else. But what are their, for what other reasons are they being used and are, are to be used? And where within the city are they to be installed? Are they also installed in residential areas?
Okay, the, the LPRs, uh, it's, we get a lot of BOLOs. A BOLO is be on the lookout for vehicles license plates that we can actually enter into a system. And when that license plate goes by that LPR, the license plate reader camera, it will notify us that it just hit the camera. And that's gonna signal our officers that that vehicle's passing through our city. And it could be anything from, uh, a narcotics type situation or, or a currency, uh, someone smuggling currency or, or fugitive arrest or, uh, uh, America's Most Wanted. It could be anything that come down from, uh, that we get from the government, the state. For whatever, for, for whatever reason, we can enter it into the system. Once we located that vehicle, uh, you, you possibly may look at having to arrest the subject. If it's narcotics, currency or just a fugitive, uh, you look at possibly if it's currency, you know, that's, that's possibly seizable depending on the situation. It could be a, a generate income in a way. Don't really depend on that, but when that happens, that would be a benefit to the city. It would not be for, it, it doesn't monitor speed. Uh, it doesn't monitor if you run a stop sign or a red light or anything like that. And on the LPRs, what I was looking at is putting them at the, the four major points coming into our city, which would be sixty-seven east and west and one eighteen north and south. So we wanna see what's hitting our city limits. That's where we have the jurisdiction to, to make contact with that individual. Anything else?
Thanks, chief.
You bet. Thank you.
All right. Counsel, like, that concludes all of our, uh, reporting this evening.
Lots of good information, Eric, and team.
Yes.
So where'd you take this picture at, Eric?
Oh, I pulled that off of Chris's site. Yeah, that's, that's the benefit of the photo contest is we get great photos from the area from people.
Nice. Okay, uh, if there's nothing else from a report standpoint, let's transition into public hearings. We have two items on the agenda. Gio, you'll let me know if anyone wants to make any comments. The first one is on, uh, getting views and comments concerning the ordinance for the 2020 tax year with the proposed property tax rate for the city of Alpine at fifty-three point three seven five three cents per hundred dollar valuation, which is called the proposed tax rate is the no new revenue tax rate. Gio, do we have anyone who'd like to make a public comment?
No, we don't.
Thank you. Uh, on the next one then is to get, uh, public, uh, citizens' views and concerning the ordinance, uh, making appropriations to support of the city of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year that starts the first of October of this year and ends thirty September next year, appropriating money to a sinking fund to pay interest and principal on the city of Alpine for that same fiscal year. So budget and paying off the debt. Gio, is anyone making any comments?
Nope, there's none.
Thank you, Gio. So with that, let's, uh, move on to the consent agenda. As always, uh, you know, these are items that, uh, basically requires a, uh, there's no discussion, you know, unless a councilman wants to pull it out. I'll turn it over to you, Eric, for the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Um, we only have one item on the consent agenda this evening. It's the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting on August fourth, 2020.
So would a member of council like to propose a motion relative to the consent agenda?
I'd like to move that we approve the minutes from August fourth, 2020.
Okay, so we have a motion for Maria. Is there a second?
Second.
Now, thanks, Ramon. So we have a motion and a second. Given we'll have one item, I presume that we don't have any discussion unless someone wants to bring it up. So with that, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, uh, for the minutes from the August fourth meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, the ma- motion passes four to zero. I'm not allowed to vote on, uh, on these things tonight. I can only vote on ordinances because of the role I'm sitting in tonight. The next we have Eric over to you for information discussion. I saw there was lots of reading material there.
Yes. Counsel, this, uh, this item really came up and I wanted to put it on, on the agenda to talk about annexation and de-annexation. Uh, because we have had several requests that have come into city hall over the last several months. And, um, you, you know, many times they'll go directly to the council person, uh, for that ward. And I think now we've had a few come in. Lucy, I think, has, has had a couple that have come her way. And, uh, so I shared with Lucy as well that I would, I would put this out there to give counsel, um, you, you know, in its entirety, the opportunity to discuss. Uh, one of them that, that, uh, is the most recent is actually at the base of A Mountain. That, uh, is, that request was included in your packet. Second one, uh, which was an, another request for de-annexation, uh, had happened back in probably middle of 2019. And that was, uh, by a, a group that lived over on the east side of the community, really between Old Marathon Highway and Highway sixty-seven. And that particular request to de-annex, had gone through all the different steps that are included in that from a charter perspective. And, uh, it needed a require, it, it really required o- over fifty percent of the residents to petition that. So that was really never achieved, but, but I certainly wanted, uh, the visibility, uh, for council to be there. Uh, so those are, those are a couple de-annexations. Uh, and then looking at annexation, um, there has been some discussion around some of the properties on the west, part of Alpine that are in close proximity. So really just included a map there in council's packet. This really to kinda open the discussion up, uh, Toronto Creek Estates obviously is one of them uh, on the west side of, of the city and that has city services out there. Um, that has been brought to my attention. Uh, and then also on the north side of the city, the, uh, the area right as you come off Loop Road that goes to the north and actually, uh, goes out to where the Christian school is. There are several residents there. And it connects up, uh, not via road, but the creek is the boundary to, uh, Country Club Estates, which is part of the city. And so one of the challenges, I know that we've always talked about with Country Club Estates is we've got a long road that, that, uh, is very costly to maintain. And when you look at that compared to, uh, the property taxes that come in from that area, you know, is, is there a better solution? So, you know, certainly that property off of Loop Road, uh, heading out that way has been something that's been brought up to me. So, um, with that being said, I really just wanted to get it out there today to open up some discussion with council uh, on expectations that, that council has relative to these, these types of annexation and de-annexation questions.
So Eric, I have some questions from a legal standpoint. The, so my understanding, and I know between you and Rod, you'll help set me straight on this. In order for a de-annexation to occur, more than half of those who are in the total area that was annexed, prior to the, or after the creation of the city, would have to support that de-annexation. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's, that's, that's our understanding.
Okay. So looking at the old Marathon Road area, uh, and it's not only residents, but it is also property owners. How does that work? Because so, there's a lot of businesses on the east end of town.
Yeah, the way our charter reads, it says residents, people that reside there. And that was something that Rod and I had talked about last fall. And so that was why we pulled the voter list of people that actually resided there. And, and they would have to make that petition.
Okay, so second question then, this singular property at the base of A Mountain, was that originally part of the city? I couldn't figure it out. I didn't do the, the overlay on the maps to figure it out.
Yeah, it's been a part of the city for, for quite a while. And, uh, you know, it used to be kind of like a little driving path up there. People used to drive up and park along the way up to the top of A Mountain. Somewhere around about third or fourth street, that access road was bought by someone. And the, the maintenance of the road kinda went away and nobody, you know, used it anymore. Gary Zent had owned this and back in 2015, 2016, he had talked to, uh, myself and Hector and Eddie about getting access up to the property. Uh, because his access, which I believe is off of like eighth street, uh, we had had it put, uh, push some, uh, a barrier up there to prevent erosion down onto the street, which limited, uh, some of his access. Gary Zent's also the individual that bought Mr. Coconut's old home. And, and then recently, uh, he was working with Scott Perry and, and Eddie and myself on developing a couple properties right at the base there. And, uh, but then he ended up selling the acreage back behind it, to, to the individual. Now, interesting enough, the individual I believe is related to Rod, so, I, I, I just wanna state that for all full disclosures. There's no conflict of interest. I didn't necessarily pull Rod into these discussions so much, uh, just, just to avoid the conflict of interest. But, uh, generally speaking, if, uh, the owner now wants to develop the property, um, and I had shared with her that she can coordinate with David Hale and work on a development plan. So sometimes people will say, hey, there's no services there. Well, yeah, we can deliver services, but there are also requirements, uh, from a development perspective that, that they have to meet too. So generally speaking, people, uh, my, my opinion is they want to de-annex because they wanna lower their tax rate. And, you know, I get that and understand it, but, you know, from a city perspective, uh, we typically, um, you know, are actively thinking to de-annex something.
And for a de-annexation, if it's on the border, that could be an individual transaction. It doesn't require, or because it was originally part of the city, it wouldn't require lots of residents to be involved.
Right, right. That particular property's owned in. Right, right. That particular property is owned en masse by, by that one individual. So, so a little different there.
Those are the questions I have. Do you have a recommendation, Eric, or some thoughts? Or are you just trying to put it out to gather data?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm not personally a fan of de-annexing, just from my own personal perspective. I don't see anything. I know we, we talked several years ago about what do you do with Country Club Estates. You know, I think that's always going to be out there and probably annexing and finding a path to make a shorter drive there, you know, is probably a better solution than trying to de-annex, per se. The, I think the other piece we really want to look at are some of these adjacent developments like Toronto Creek Estates right next to, to the community. And from a city perspective, do you want to press forward with annexing that? We also have development, once again, you know, Rod's Conflict Ventures, but you own property right between the north end of town out to the airport, you know, and we've got that old scout addition too. You know, is that something that council would contemplate wanting to annex from about Harrison Street out to the airport as well? So probably things we want to put our thinking hats on. You know, I don't, I don't know if it necessarily requires a workshop, but something that, you know, when we think about growth in Alpine, is, is that what we want to do? Anything within a mile of the ETJ, David still has authority over it from a building perspective. But certainly it's easier for us to administrate if it is part of the city rather than just part of the ETJ.
Is this something planning and zoning could take under their hat to go look at and come back with recommendations to council? I'm not trying to pass the buck, but I'm just trying to think about this broader umbrella. And with David Hale on board, my sense is, I wouldn't say P&amp;Z's workload's down, but there may be an opportunity there. Just think about that.
Well, I think that's a good suggestion because if we looked at that in parallel with understanding our zoning right now, and do we need to make some modifications and really look at kind of what our master plan is, and then incorporate annexation as part of that master plan deliverable. And David and I certainly could go, you know, work back with planning and zoning on that.
I think that would be a good idea.
I think David's on the call today and he's probably thinking, okay, boss, you're signing me up for more work. He's, he's, he's a smart guy. He's seen a lot of this happen across Texas. And we're fortunate to have him as part of the team.
Eric, I'm just curious. Is there anyone out there within the Zoom viewing community that maybe may have an idea, an opinion on annexation, de-annexation? Has anybody called in or texted in or?
No, we, we just, you know, Ramon, we get more individual requests from people.
People calling in?
Yeah, that, that's really most of it. But I think, well, we have John Kennedy on our transportation vision or transportation committee. I bring up transportation committee because as we talk about stuff going through north of town, you know, we had the readout with, with Tex dot in that group today. And that certainly has got to play in with what we're trying to do from this overarching master plan, especially when we think about properties of the north. Because they did talk specifically about, you know, rail bypass as well as truck bypass today. And so I think having somebody like John Kennedy, who's got some experience in community planning as well, and Jim Street, who are both on that, that committee, working something in parallel with, with planning and zoning as we get closer to tying these things together.
They also talked about upgrading the Texas Pacifico line between now and February. It's starting to use it starting in February.
Right. Well, I think we have to tie that in. Let me, let me take that back as, as an action, not only to work with David and planning and zoning, but then also as part of our, our transportation committee as well, to have them at least think about that piece. The shorter, shorter path to getting there is with David and P&amp;Z. So I think if we can have P&amp;Z agenda for, you know, a couple meetings before the end of the year, and then maybe come back in January with, with a, maybe some more formal thoughts around it.
Anyone else have any thoughts or comments for Eric?
This is John Kennedy, but would be happy to help with that up here, Derek. And I think that's a great idea to link the P&amp;Z work with some of the transportation committee work.
Great. Thank you, John. Appreciate that.
Okay, if there's no other discussion then, probably time to move on to item number nine, which are action items, to be accompanied by a brief statement of fact, including where the funds are coming from, if applicable. We have seven action items tonight. Eric, you want to take the first one?
Yes, sir. City Council, item number one is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the second and final reading of the City of Alpine Personnel Policy. We had the first reading last meeting.
Is there someone who would like?
I'll move. I'll, I'll make a motion that we discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the second and final reading of the City of Alpine Personnel Policy.
So we have a motion and a second. So we're into the, into discussion. Comments, thoughts? Anyone have?
It was good last meeting. It's still good this week.
Yeah.
So, so with that, we have a motion on the floor, I believe, which is to approve the second and final reading of the City of Alpine Personnel Policy. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Okay. And since we are below five and it's a ordinance, then I would say aye. That would be five to zero. Okay. Okay, we are on to the next action item, and that's relative to the fire prevention ordinance. Mr. Zimmer?
Yes, City Council. Item number two is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2020-0702, an ordinance of the City of Alpine amending. The Alpine Code of Ordinances, Chapter 46, Fire Prevention and Preservation for Fire Fees for the City of Alpine. We did have this item as information and discussion last week and did not have any feedback to me directly over the last two weeks on this. So we're pressing forward with the first reading this evening.
So would someone like to propose an ordinance, or make the motion?
I'll make a motion that we discuss, consider, and approve the first reading of ordinance 2020-0702. Don't need to read the rest of it?
We're good, Maria.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Lucy. So I just made comment. So subsequent to our last meeting, this is one I worked with David on, went through it. And as, as Eric has commented before, he brings a wealth of insight and knowledge to the table. And I know he's not gotten any comments. So thanks, David, for championing that thing through. Is there any further discussion anyone would like to make? So hearing none. Call for the question. All those in favor of approving the first reading of ordinance 2020-07-02, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, and I would vote in the ayes. So that would be five to zero. Okay. Mr. Zimmer, item number three, another ordinance.
City Council, you're, you're going to get a vote a bunch tonight, Council Stevens. Item three is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2020-08-02, an ordinance making appropriations for the support of the City of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021, appropriating money to a sinking fund to pay interest and principal on the City of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year 2020-2021. This would be the first reading for that particular ordinance.
So would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading of ordinance 2020-08-02, an ordinance making appropriations for support of the City of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021, appropriating money to a sinking fund to pay interest and principal in the City of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Thank you, Ramon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Maria. So we have a motion and a second. And this is an item that came up for public comment. We heard none. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no discussion or further discussion. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please signify by saying nay. Okay, so that's four ayes, and I will add an aye to that as well. Motion passes five to zero. And the next step on that one, I presume Cynthia, you'll have to get that out for, for publication in the newspaper, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Zimmer, continue on.
All right. Number four is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the first reading of ordinance 2020-08-01, the 2020 tax year proposed property tax rate for the City of Alpine, Texas, .553753 per $100 valuation. The proposed tax rate is the no new tax, no new revenue tax rate.
So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we discuss, consider, and approve the first reading of ordinance 2020-08-01.
Thank you, Maria. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lucy. So any questions on this ordinance? So I do have one, just to make sure I'm really clear. We have new wording in here that I've not seen before, don't recall. It's called the no new revenue tax rate. So in essence, that means no change, meaning, but we're not getting any new revenue as a result of passing this, this item because it's not a new revenue tax rate. Do I understand it correctly?
That is correct. It's, you know, identified as part of the new legislation that passed that they call it the no new revenue. Basically, we're just stating to the public, we're not trying to collect new or increased revenue.
Yep.
And so this is, this is the rate that's been established through the, through the calculations. Because we're going with the no new revenue, we will not have to have another public hearing on tax rate.
Okay. And Cynthia, can you remind us, please, when we do the second reading of these ordinances, is it all, it requires a positive council member vote by vote?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay. So the second reading, when we go through it the next time after we do all the publications and everything else, we will have to do a roll call vote. We'll, Andy, worry about that. Just a reminder for all of us that that's what will come up. So unless we hear any further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Signify by saying nay. And I too would add an aye to that. So motion passes five to zero. Eric, on to action item number five.
All right, City Council. Item five is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on Resolution 2020-08-10 in support of the Alpine Downtown Association. That group has been formed and working actively for a good four to five years. Part of what happens in, in Marcy's world, is she's writing grants. One of the questions that comes up is, you know, what, what sort of entities do you have via chambers, economic development that the city is actively supporting and engaged with? And so the purpose of this resolution is really to form, formalize that.
So with that, go ahead, Maria.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we discuss, consider, and approve the Resolution 2020-08-10 in support of the Alpine Downtown Association.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lucy. So I just comment, just so everyone knows, you know, the officers of this group are Jim Street, who's the chair, Dave Bucy's the vice chair, John Kennedy is the secretary, and yours truly is the treasurer. And the organization's been active. Thanks to Jim and Dave and John for providing the leadership there. And to Eric's point, been working very closely with, with Marcy Tuck. The Downtown Association just wrote a level, a, a letter of support for some of the grants that Marcy's going after. So it's been very helpful and hopefully it'll help Marcy get over the goal line there and bring in OPM, other people's money to, to the city. So any additional discussion?
Yes. Maybe just for clarification, I guess it's to Eric. Did I hear correctly that to support the Alpine Downtown Association, that we would allow or approve seeking of funding from other sources through grants to help them accomplish what their mission goals are?
No, it's about the city. It's about the Downtown Association helping the city. The Alpine Downtown Association is not asking the city for, for any funds other than what it might do out of hotel occupancy tax. But no, the grants, the letters, the Downtown Association is writing in support of the city.
Okay.
Yeah. And it is a 501(c)(3) for profit, federally recognized as one.
So is the only change in this going to be that this, like, the city council is recognizing it? Or, so that's, okay.
Yep.
Got it.
It'd be like many times, Maria, municipalities, counties, states would recognize chambers for exactly the same reason. They're partners and they, they help the municipality do good work.
Great. Thank you.
So as partners, the, our goal would basically to, I guess, encourage them or, or what we've worked with them to enhance their capability to do good things for the city. I'm a little cloudy in that area.
Basically, a pat on the back says, please continue to support us, city. We, City Council, support what you're doing.
Yeah. And in this particular case, Ramon, by him writing a letter in support of our project, that were, you know, the grant that we're applying through with the CDBG on the sidewalks for downtown, if we get that grant, that's going to benefit that Downtown Association in the work that they're trying to do.
But the money doesn't go to the association?
Correct. Comes to the city.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of approving our Resolution 2020-08-10, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, motion passes four to zero. Okay. Next item is mine. And that was, you know, put on the agenda to talk about Eric. You know, Eric came on board as you all called, you saw in his contract, in, in early September of last year. We have an opportunity to have a discussion about what's going on from a performance standpoint. I did pre-coordinate with Eric and ask him if he wanted to do this in executive session or in public session. He said, hey, let's do it in public session. So we have the opportunity to take an action. As has happened in the past, one of the things that I've done is gone off and pulled together market data from around the state for municipalities that are roughly the same size we are, to be able to do a market-based study from a compensation standpoint. I will tell you, with all the things going on, I've not completed that. So I don't believe there's going to need to be any action tonight relative to compensation adjustment. But But I do think it's worthwhile that we allow Eric to provide counsel, his perspective and assessment, and then we counsel, share our perspectives back about where that stands. So that was the team's plan and strategy. Does that make sense?
Can I get a motion, please?
Yeah, so I'll make the motion right hand to review, discuss, and consider the city manager's annual performance.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have the motion and a second. And now let the discussion begin. So Eric, I'll turn the floor over to you because I know one of the things you had looked at was bringing an update in on 180-day report. You're into your second 180 days, but I know there's a number of things you wanted to share.
Right, so thank you, council. Hard to believe it's been a year, or almost a year. You know, September 3rd, when when I did interview back with the city and council, we did that in open session, and and I think when when Rick and I had this conversation a week or so ago, I told him, I said, we, you know, we should just continue to have these types of discussions in open session. During that September 3rd meeting, mapped out a 180-day plan that was really designed to hit the ground running. And at that point in time, we had several vacancies in very key positions at the city and certainly hiring people of good caliber that could lead departments was of utmost importance. And so that combined with really building some steam on our leadership training and development of our core leadership staff, then alongside doing a relook at the budget and come back and make some adjustments on the budget. And so really, in the first four to six months, we were very successful on working through those key three principles, along with many, many of the other items that were on that that list. And so in your packet this evening, I had asked Cynthia to go ahead and include that original 180-day plan. And then after that, it was, I believe, the March 3rd, or it was the first meeting in March, we took and really looked at the initiatives, priorities, and challenges and said, okay, you know, we've worked through items on that original 180-day plan. Now we've got our team started in leadership training. How do we start taking our different departments from administration to finance to police, water, wastewater, et cetera, and really get them focused on three or four key goals, initiatives, priorities, and then also identify what their challenges were to completing those. So that happened, that first meeting of March, and we really lined up nicely with our leadership training and how our team members were pulling together goals as well. And then, of course, COVID hit us. So, middle of March, we really were trying to keep focused on activities we needed to perform for the city as far as delivering a good paving program for the year, delivering the the utility upgrades, the water, wastewater improvements, the work that Randy was doing in the gas division. And of course, stay, you know, help stay focused on that as the world was dealing with a pandemic. And so really working those things in parallel and then also continuing to, you know, build our employee teams and have a sense of ownership, a sense of belonging, and a sense of of real hard work was 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 an important challenge for us. And I did, in the packet, also want to include the the website, too, from what we've developed on a COVID perspective because I think that speaks to also the ability and willingness of our teams to pivot into other activities and create real value for our community. Also communicate well with the community. That was something that, like Chief talked about, his chat with the chief. You know, we weren't able to do those live. I know I was doing a lot of coffee with the city managers. We couldn't do that live. So we've moved into some more virtual environments, but also putting out good information for the community to help promote, you know, a certain level of calm, calmness within the community. And so I think looking at the last six months and really understanding what we've tried to accomplish from a COVID resource perspective, too, has been super important. You know, so as we look at these initiatives, priorities, and challenges that we're dealing with now, the team is going ahead and updating and saying, okay, time to refresh this list, and then in the middle of September, I'll be delivering that to council as as these key priorities that we're working on from a city perspective. And as I mentioned earlier in the city manager report, another layer that we really want to add on this year is this notion around how do you tie the budget, how do you tie the spend into what initiatives and priorities are? Because if you don't do that, it's real easy for a team member to say, hey, I want to do, you know, $2 million worth of work if they only have a $1.2 million budget. So we really have to make sure we have good coordination between what those initiatives and priorities are relative to what our budget. So we're layering that in this year, too. I tell you, we're really super, super happy with our department heads. I'm super happy with our employees. I know I showed a couple meetings ago where we were at with turnover. Turnover, you know, knock on wood, you never want to say this, but it's been trending down. And our goal is to keep it at a low level. And we want people to have a good working experience at the city and want to continue to serve customers well. We do talk a lot about accountability and and then also talk a lot about communication back with the community. So I'm super pleased with our team. And I think you, when you see the reporting that you've been experiencing, we've got a great collaborative group of leaders out there that are working very hard to deliver to the city, but also communicate well. So to me, it's about keeping it open in the public and having the dialogue. Certainly enjoy the work. As my parents tell me, I was probably born for this. So, but but at the end of the day, I'm blessed with the people around me. So this is nothing more than a reflection of the good work that they're doing.
Eric, thanks. Probably worthwhile now to go kind of around the room, you know, one through five, from a council perspective, provide your thoughts, feedback, and comments. And maybe if you could, I see you smiling, Maria, because you're thinking, I'm first and I hate to talk. You know, you might kind of just give some feedback and maybe kind of wrap it up with a, you know, if you were to look at Eric, you know, in terms of his performance, you know, what's the right adjective that would that would go along with that? Okay?
Well, I would like to say that with Eric's performance this last year, it's been a really, it's been great. From where we were, we've come a really long way. Very quickly, seen a lot of positive improvements through all the departments and getting all the positions filled, which is, which was really, really important to have that done quickly. And then it's great to see the continuing, to see the city moving forward safely through through all of this with the with the COVID and, I mean, just all these things that have come up. And it takes takes a lot of hard work to keep keep things moving forward, and I really appreciate everything that's been done so far.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Ramon?
It's been a rather unusual and challenging year with the with the COVID experience that we've gone through. But I'd like to say that kudos to all, all of the employees within the city of Alpine. They have come together and they pulled through to continue providing the best possible services for for the residents. And we should be proud of them and proud of the fact that they have a good leader. They have a good manager who has done a tremendous amount of planning to be able to make sure that those services are provided and enhanced for for our residents. So with that, I would say, thank you, Eric. Great job.
Thank you, Ramon.
Thanks, Ramon. Betty?
Well, I think he's done a great job, and I hope he sticks around.
Thank you, Betty. That's the plan.
Lucy?
Um, I think you're doing a great job from the first time that I walked back into your office. And I actually saw it very lighted up with positive things all over the, your office. That was the big step because it was nothing like that. I learn a lot from you all the time. Your door is always open. And to me, that's very important. The other thing is that you keep reaching out to the community to make sure that all the entities get together, and to me, that that is a big thing. The employees have that open door to go and talk to you, and and that's good also. So you need to stick around.
Thank you, Lucy.
Thanks, Lucy. I appreciate Eric, the six pages you put together because it really does document all that's gone on in the last year. I've told other people, I think I've told you this as well. I think you're a better city manager this time than you were the first time because we all learn and we're able to step away, you know, we're able to take advantage of that experience. I want to echo the comment made about pulling the community together, which I think is so important where we live and the opportunities we have. So and, you know, tomorrow's meeting is going to be a terrific example of that. So, yeah, I I echo everyone's comments. I think you've done a terrific job, and I'm glad you're motivated to stick around because we need you dearly. And and Ramon made a great comment as well about the employees. We have great employees trying to do the right thing, trying to provide the services that we all expect. I think an important part of that is they can do that when they're well-led and someone is taking care of them so they can get their job done. So it's terrific to say, and thanks for providing that leadership.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
I I'm not sure if there's any specific action that we need to take because one of the actions that we will need to sort through from a council standpoint will be where he is from a compensation perspective, just as a reminder. And, you know, Cynthia included Eric's contract in our in our package. He came on board September 3rd of last year at an annual salary of $145,000. We have an obligation to do one of two things, and that is to change his compensation. If we choose to take no action, then it would go to whatever appropriate level happens from a city standpoint because it's consistent with that. That's just part of the contract we put in place. I will get off my duff and go pull together the market data and bring it back to the next city council meeting so we all have information and data under which we can make an informed decision. Does that make sense?
Yes, definitely.
Yes.
So with that, I would, I I think it makes sense to have the record reflect that the city council reviewed, discussed, and considered the city manager's annual performance, reviewing the six pages that he included within the within the documents for city council tonight. And that across the board, council is very pleased with comments including great job, excellent leadership, and we're glad to have Eric on board. So with that minor amendment, if I can say, would all in favor of that, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, and I can't vote? No, that would be be four to zero then. Thank you. And so we'll get that on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay. Item number seven, I also put on the on the agenda, and item number seven was a proposed change to the ordinance, and I'm getting to my correct page here. Too many pages here. Sorry, I'm scrolling. I've got two screens going. To, and as you recall, at the last, or a couple city council meetings ago, I suggested we may want to consider modifying the membership of our Parks and Recreation Board to do a couple things. One was to be able to add for the possibility of membership from AISD as well as the Alpine Friends of the Park or similar organization, if that organization were to go away, which would take it from a minimum of five members and to a maximum of seven members, and then give some flexibility for those that not only live within the city, but also work in the city because we have a number of individuals who may live outside the city but have a huge passion for the park and want to be able to support it. So that's the basis behind the ordinance, which includes modification to board establishment, appointment of terms, and also what constitutes a quorum. So with that, would someone like to make a motion relative to this particular ordinance?
I'll make a motion that we review, discuss, consider, and take appropriate action regarding the first reading on ordinance 2020 oh eight oh three, an ordinance of the city of Alpine, Texas, changing the criteria for the membership of the Parks and Recreation Board.
Maria, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lucy. Any any discussions on this then? I've kind of given the outline. It was based on what we talked about in information discussion some time ago as council.
Yep, it is.
Hearing none, then I'd like to call for the question. All in favor of reading the, of approving the first reading of ordinance 2020 dash zero eight dash zero three, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please signify by saying nay. Okay, and I would vote aye on that as well. So that'd be a pass that passes five to zero. Okay, thank you all. And we'll get that out for for posting and bring that back around next time. So that's the end of of action items that we had seven. Moving on to a city council member comments and to give Maria a bit of a breather, why don't we start with Lucy?
Great. I think this was a very good meeting. All of the videos, the pictures, I love to see those. They're my favorite. Eric, you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you, Lucy.
Thanks, Lucy. Betty?
Yes, I think the meeting went very well, and I think Zimmer should stay with us because he's good.
Thank you, Betty.
Thanks, Betty. Okay, Ramon?
Other than a good meeting, great discussions, also good reports. Learned a lot, and again, thank you, Eric. Great job.
Thank you, Ramon.
Maria?
Um, I just have to say, great updates as usual, and thanks to everybody for all the hard work that they've put into this meeting.
Yeah, thanks very much. Yeah, I would make the same comments, and I think a special thanks to EK. I know we all got the letter from the 75 residents of both Presidio and Brewster County about what's going on with masks. It's great that EK has been involved in working that. I know that's a county decision, but it's nice to see all the data on that. And Eric, please pass along, as I know you will from all of us, the great reports that that are ongoing, and it's great to see a number of members of of the team on the call tonight, even though I know they're muted. It's nice to see this moving along, and I'd also like to compliment Gio for making this really smooth. You know, it's been making it nice. It's very seamless, Gio, so thanks for all you do to make this happen behind the scenes. We know the duck is paddling like mad. Okay, so with that, we now have an executive session. Would someone like to propose we move? So with that, we now have an executive session. Would someone like to propose we move into executive session?
May we go into executive session?
Very good. Thank you, Ramon. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Maria. So we have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that passes four zero. We'll go into executive session. I know this is sessions, the two items you see on the agenda that Maria has asked for. And we're going to limit the participation in executive session to be counsel, Eric, Cynthia and Lorena. And when we're done, we'll be ready to come back out into the public session. So Gio, I know you're going to move us into a room, a breakout room, and then once we'll conduct our executive session. Just for counsel, my put would be that once we move into that breakout room, we then take a quick one function break, which could be bio, could be getting coffee, could be whatever you want, but short break. And then we convene in the executive session. So Gio, go ahead and make the move.
Thank you.
He's putting us on mute, right?
Yeah, he's moving us through into the other room.
So we hit join, join on the screen.
You don't have to, Ramon, just hang in there. You're going to be joined in the new room. That's what he's made it seamless. Knock on wood. Hope it all works. That's what Gio's thinking.
Right.
Okay, so you're going to get a note there to join the breakout room?
Yes.
And you can go ahead and hit join.
Okay, Gio. Well done in making that seamless for all of us. Okay, we are back in regular session. Maria, would you like to make a motion concerning our activities in executive session? Maria, you're on mute.
Sorry, is that better? Okay, I'd like to make a motion. Can I do for both one and two?
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we take no action today on one and two executive actions, but to put on there that we'll have another executive session in our next meeting to revisit this discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Okay, so I've got Lucy, Ramon, and Maria. Betty is not there, so I'd be three to zero. It's a quorum, okay? And I think we're done. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to move we adjourn.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Anyone who wanted to debate? No, hearing none. We're adjourned. Thank you all very much for your patience on this, and thanks for everything.
Thank you everyone.
Bye guys, thank you.
Thank you.